Lieutenant, that's right, the New Guinea Forces. Mr. Bergweger was appointed as the S2, responsible for the group's security, including control of top-secret and other classified material. Over the next year, almost all of the New Guinea Forces were demoted to more appropriate staff positions and replaced by more senior officers, such as majors and lieutenant colonels. As a charter member of the New Guinea Forces, serving as the S2 for a year, after the 525M group was ordered to relocate to Vietnam to provide intelligence support for the Military Assistance Combat Command Vietnam, MACV, commanded by General Westmoreland, Mr. Bergweger was sensibly demoted to the Assistant S2 while an experienced captain took over. In November 1965, the 525th MI group sailed from San Francisco to Saigon and the 519th Battalion sailed through Panama Canal to Vietnam. After arriving in Saigon, the group moved to a facility designated to house a factory located on the Saigon River, where Road 1 crosses the river. This road was known as the "Street Without Joy" during the French fighting in Vietnam. Directly across the river was War Zone 3, where the 1st Infantry Division, the big red one, was fighting the Vietcong and North Vietnamese. When on duty at night, I would stand in the-- Mr. Bergweger would stand in an open area and watch tracer bullets fly overhead. Although Mr. Bergweger had been demoted to an Assistant S2, he continued to do much of the work that the S2s-- that was responsible for the S2 responsibilities. For example, a major asked him to figure out how the group could go undercover. This was necessary because the 525MI group was having more grenades thrown at us than any of the other units operating in and around Saigon. Additionally, the 519th Battalion, while still at the-- at sea, heard a broadcast personally addressed to them by Hanoi Hannah, reporting that the 525th Group had been attacked by grenades. Three soldiers received minor injuries. The VC had identified the group as an intelligence unit. In addition to going undercover, his security responsibilities included all the top-secret material we provided to MACV. Another responsibility was flying to the headquarters of each of the war zones in Vietnam and reviewing their security systems to confirm that they were secure. Another duty was to drive to the airbase about 16 miles north of Saigon, where replacement soldiers would arrive by US commercial airlines to check into the country. He would give a personal lecture to the new arrivals on the things they could do to improve their personal security. A pair of majors, who were Korean War veterans, attended one of the lectures and dismissed advice from a mere lieutenant. On their way in a Jeep into Saigon, while ignoring my advice and while stuck in traffic, a VC rode by on a bicycle and using a rolled-up newspaper, dropped a grenade into their Jeep. They tossed the grenade out of the Jeep and the grenade exploded on the sidewalk, injuring some pedestrians. Mr. Bergweger spent a year in Vietnam, including the days onboard ship, and then returned to Fort Bragg, was promoted to captain, and retired two years, eight months, and some days. He may have been untrained and of low rank, but learned a few things along the way. And when he left Vietnam, he was awarded the Bronze Star for meritorious service. And now, gentlemen, I invite you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have-- Dan? We have two announcements this evening. I'd first like to acknowledge Steve Rubin of District 3, please, who has some very exciting news for us.
I'll tell you, after that, I'm still a little choked up, having lived through the Vietnam War. So again, thank you, gentlemen, for your service. On a different note, on a positive note, May 23rd, for those of you who don't know, the town's gonna have a-- through the town party, there's gonna be a parade. And it's gonna be a pretty exciting parade. They're gonna be passing out New Orleans-type of beads. It's gonna be the New Orleans Jazz Preservation Band, the same band that's gonna be playing at the town party set up by Town Hall. There's gonna be food trucks there, with the prices supplemented by the town party. There's gonna be desserts given out. It's gonna be a fun event. We have been invited, as an RTM, to march in that parade. We've created-- or we are creating a banner, which I believe the moderator and moderator pro tem are gonna be holding as we march.
Well, you're holding it, too.
And we're hoping that we can get a lot of our members here to participate with us. We'd love to start getting the people in town to see who we are and get a little more involvement with us. Parade, I believe, is going to be at 5:30. They're gonna send us more details about it as we get closer. And as we do get closer, I'll-- I'll do a blast so everybody sees those details. And hopefully, a lot of you will show up. And if you have children, I think they're gonna love it, getting those-- the New Orleans beads and the ice cream that's gonna be given out. And it'll be just a fun festive day. So hopefully, I'll see a lot of you on the 23rd.
Don't go anywhere. Stay there. So in addition to the banner, we have a very, very, very limited and exclusive number of RTM t-shirts that will be given out to those who march. They will be hotter and more popular than the Taylor Swift "Eras" t-shirts, which are currently selling on eBay for thousands of dollars. And this one says, "District 3 RTM, Certus for You."
Well, thank you. I hope it's an extra-large. Well, I was debating about bringing-- I was also gonna donate-- you know, we make uniforms. And I have-- we have these very exclusive cabana hats that I was gonna bring about 25-- for the first 25 people who show up to it. And it's just gonna be a fun, joyous day with it.
Coming out? Okay. All right. So we have one more announcement, which is GEMS would like to very briefly tell you about what they were introducing to you outside. And Joseph Lasella, Greenwich Emergency Alert System, GEMS member, will talk about that.
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak for just two brief minutes. My name is Joe Lasella. I'm your Emergency Management Director for the town of Greenwich. I do work for GEMS. And together with all emergency services and with so many great partners here in town, we are working every day to keep our community safe and prepare for emergencies. One of those things that we are doing is we just introduced a new system called Greenwich Alerts. This system is a mass notification system. This will replace any old systems that we may have had at one point in time. And if there's an emergency, such as a flood, a hurricane, or some kind of hostile event that we had to get ahold of you quickly, emergency responders can send out a message to your specific neighborhood, to your street, or to the whole town to notify you about a pending emergency. It's very simple to register. You do have to create a username and password, but it's GreenwichAlerts.com. There's barcodes that you can scan in. I will have information at the table out front. Please take it home to your neighborhoods, to your families. I may not be here when you leave. I do have another engagement to go to this evening, but I will leave plenty of materials outside on the table. I'm here to help you. So if there's a way that I can help you prepare your neighborhoods, your communities, your organizations, please do not hesitate to call me anytime. All my contact information is on the Emergency Management page of the town website. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Dan, is this thing on? You can hear me? Because I can't hear myself. Okay. That concludes our announcements. Are there-- no more announcements? As all members have received a copy of the minutes from the April meeting, the reading of those minutes will be omitted. Are there any proposed changes to our April minutes? Hearing none and absent objection, those minutes as submitted stand adopted upon unanimous consent. Before we begin considering the call items, I just would wanna offer a couple important reminders. If at any time you believe you have a problem with your clicker and it's not during an open voting period, you can come up to the front desk. We will assist you with it, you know, help you replace your batteries, provide you with a new clicker if necessary. If during an open voting window, you do have a problem and you're in the room, you need to stand-- you yourself, the person with the problem, not your proxy-- raise a point of information. We will assist you with the problem. We'll ask you what the problem is. And if necessary, we will stop the timer and keep the voting window open until the problem has been resolved. For those people who are participating online, I just wanna remind everybody what the tech support line number is. It's 203-992-8383. The votes tend to be at the budget meeting, longer periods of time between when we take them. So if you are participating online, please make sure your digital device doesn't fall asleep when it comes time to vote. And as has been our practice for the last three years, if you are participating remotely and you need to offer a point of information or a point of order or get the attention of the moderator, you need to contact your district chair or someone who is in the room that you have a relationship with in your district who will get our attention here. Don't raise your hand on the gallery and the Zoom meeting. That's not how we do it. Okay? I hope there are no questions. So that brings us to the call for tonight's meeting. We have three items. Item one is the first item, the time at which to adjourn. Mr. Bergweger, could you please read that resolution for us?
Resolved that the meeting of the RTM on Monday, May 8, 2023, if the business of the meeting has not been concluded by 12:00 midnight, the meeting shall adjourn at that time to meet again on Tuesday, May 9, 2021-- oh, I'm sorry. That's 2023. There's a typo in the resolution. At 7:00 PM at Central Middle School and via Zoom webinar.
So I'm assuming you will offer a substitute resolution right now to--
I hereby do that.
Okay, good. So we are not going back in the wayback time machine. It would be tomorrow, 2023, not two years ago. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved and seconded. It is now before us. Mr. Bergweger, would you like to offer the report of Eleanor if you have anything additional to say?
Yes, this is-- aside from having the wrong years, this is the same kind of wording that we take every year. And we didn't even bother discussing it. We just voted 11-0-0. We had 11 members of the district in present. District 10 was trying to get onboard, but by the Zoom factor, but the technical deliveries-- I mean, technical difficulties prevented her from accessing our meeting.
Thank you. Does anyone wanna debate this issue? Are there any objections to this item? It is something that we can't adopt by unanimous consent, but if somebody objects, we would take a record vote. Are there any objections to this item? Hearing none, that item stands adopted upon unanimous consent. Mr. Bergweger, could you introduce item number two, please?
Resolved that the time to speak at the May RTM be limited to two minutes per speaker for each motion, except that the proponent and principal opponent for the motion, the latter to be determined by the moderator, shall be entitled to speak for five minutes each. Committee reports shall be limited to five minutes each, except for education and finance. The Education and Finance Committee reports shall be limited to seven minutes each.
Thank you. May a member move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved and seconded. Mr. Bergweger, do you have anything that you'd like to add to this?
Yes, at our meeting, I neglected to mention before that Legislative and Rules List met last Monday. And we-- we had-- we were had help by Barbara Schellenberg, the town attorney, Amina Ahmad, the assistant town attorney, and Karen Fasiliotis of the BET. Again, this was an item that has been typically voted on every year. It just turned out that last year we've changed the minutes just slightly. And now we have this new version. The District 1 moved and District 7 seconded to limit the committee reports of education and finance to five minutes each, the same as the other committee reports. After discussion, the vote on the motion to amend failed. Then we voted 11-0-0 on legal order and the merits.
Thank you. Further debate on item two? Again, if there are no objections, we can adopt this by unanimous consent. Is anyone objecting? Hearing no objections, item two stands adopted upon unanimous consent. That brings us to the main event, item number three. I'd like to recognize Daniel Ozesmier, Chair of the BET, to present this item.
Thank you, Alexis. Item three is the town budget. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the recommendation of the Board of Estimate and Taxation as contained in the said proposed budget filed as above stated in the office of the town clerk and submitted at the meeting of the representative town meeting B, and the same hereby are approved as appropriations for the ensuing fiscal year 2324, except that the following items shall be decreased or amended as follows. I mean, the rest of the resolution is as it appears on the call.
Thank you. May a member move the adoption of that resolution? The item has been moved and seconded. It is now before the body. Mr. Ozesmier, I now invite you to give your report as the chairman of the BET Budget Chair. There are also copies of that report, I believe, if anyone wants to follow along, up at the front, if anyone wants one.
Okay. We did, late this afternoon, send out the full letter by email. So you'll have that. And it also will be contained in the budget part of the BET website. So if anyone wants to look at in the future. I will just make some brief comments. I won't read the entire letter. I'm gonna focus on the budget outlook for fiscal '24. The fiscal '24 budget represents values, priorities, and required thoughtful choices. A successful budget should fund our operating budgets, invest in our community, respond to changing circumstances and opportunities, and ensure that our taxes continue to be affordable and our debt burdens remain prudent. I believe our fiscal '24 budget achieved all of these goals. The operating budget established new funding within the town budget for a program to enhance school security by assigning Greenwich police officers to the schools. Our town treasurer, working with the BET, improved our approach to cash management. We implemented a plan to increase investments in short-term treasury bills and reduce exposure to bank deposits, which increased yield and reduced risk. Our projected revenue increased from $1 million in fiscal '23 to $6 million in fiscal '24. I would add that, you know, I think our treasurer and town controller did a great job on this program. And it's interesting. We started well ahead of the events of the spring, but I think we all saw the same thing. You know, the bank deposits became much riskier and treasury yields increased significantly. We also invested more in capital than in any other year in Greenwich history. We invested 112 million-- I'm sorry. We invested 112.4 million in-- okay, sorry. We invested more in capital than any other year in Greenwich history. We invested 112.4 million in general fund capital. This is almost twice the fiscal '23 amount of $65.2 million, which are the previous-- which was the previous record. Capital funding included monies for a new central middle school and funds to continue the renovation project of Old Greenwich School and ADA projects for the town and schools. The total five-year capital proposed is $396 million. In addition, the fiscal '24 budget included $4.4 million in capital projects and other revenue funds, such as sewer maintenance, infrastructure, Nathaniel witherall and the golf course. We continue to maintain our general fund balance, aka working capital in the private sector or rainy day fund, at historic and appropriate levels. Recent increasing losses at the Nathaniel witherall and reduction revenues from conveyance and building permits will challenge the fund in fiscal '24. We used in-- we used in fiscal '24 an amount similar to that in fiscal '23 of $23.5 million to balance the budget and reduce the mill rate. We also used $4 million of the capital, non-recurring capital budget to reduce the amount of long-term debt to be funded. The tax rate, or mill rate, in the recommended budget will increase by 1% from $11.28 mils to $11.39, benefiting all residents. The low mill rate increases due to prudent budgeting, favorable change in healthcare, and the increased revenues from our investments in cash. The budget has the right balance that will continue to make Greenwich a great place to live, work, raise a family, and retire. I would like to make some comments on looking forward to fiscal '25 because, as you all know, the budget process, once we finish this year, will start in earnest again next fall. For fiscal '25, Greenwich is facing many opportunities, risks and end risks, including the impact of inflation on cost of capital projects, labor contracts, and general operations; the potential of a recession; the impact of volatility in financial markets on town pension, OPEC funds, and interest earned; the need and opportunity plan for lower enrollment trends in our schools; putting the Nathaniel witherall on a sustainable path; determining the highest and best and most appropriate use of the Havemire Building; continuing to execute our capital campaign for the schools; assuring that all ARP projects are completed on time and properly documented; managing the impact of cliff funding arising from ARP and ESER operating and capital spending in the town and schools; assisting the town in improving our capital improvement process, including ongoing development of the five-year capital plan; developing a better understanding of the impact of remote work and technology on town operations. By working together, Greenwich will manage these risks, capitalize on opportunities, and continue to thrive. I have been honored to serve as the Chair of the BET. And I want to thank everyone who plays an integral part in developing the budget, including First Selectman Fred Camillo, Town Administrator Ben Branion, Department and Commission Heads, the Board of Education, and Superintendent Tody Jones, the GPS Administration, and the BET Budget Committee chaired by Leslie Tarkington and including Leslie Moriarty, Nisha Rora, and Laura Erickson. In particular, I want to thank and recognize Controller Pete Menarski, Budget Director Roland Geiger, and the Finance Department staff. I also wish to sincerely thank my fellow members of the Board of Estimate and Taxation for their hard work, service, patience, and collegiality. Lastly, I extend my appreciation to the RTM members who have spent the time to understand the proposed budget. Greenwich is fortunate to have so many engaged volunteers. Thank you very much. Make one last comment. I am aware that, you know, in terms of the motions that you're looking at tonight, I know there's one motion concerning the rink. And there was an email sent to the entire RTM community by Bill Drake, who's the Chair of the Rink Committee. And since not everyone may have gotten the email late this afternoon, he did ask me to read it. It says, from Bill, "After communication with all stakeholder groups, I'd like to encourage the RTM to vote for the motion to delete the $950,000 rink appropriation. This will allow the Department of Public Works to bring this item back in a month or a few months as an interim appropriation after municipal improvement is approved by the Board of Selectmen, Planning and Zoning Commission, and all RTM members. A methodical, close review in the next few weeks of this project has everyone's support: the Selectmen's Office, the BET, the Risk Use Committee, many RTM members and RTM committees. Thanks. I hope this makes your deliberations this evening simpler and more productive." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. We're now gonna hear committee reports. As a reminder, I just wanna let everybody know, with the exception of finance and education, committee chairs are limited to five minutes. Education and finance will have seven minutes. So you are welcome to begin lining up down here. It doesn't matter what order you go in. Craig, I will need a five-minute timer set up. Okay, you can come up in any order you want. Okay. Who's going first? Okay. Catherine Le Balbo, who is the Chairwoman of the Parks and Recreation Committee, will deliver her first five-minute report.
Good evening. Moderator Vulgaris and members of the RTM. Your Park and Recreation Committee met us Tuesday to review the fiscal year 2324 operational and capital budget. We took no exception to the operational budget, finding it sound and well within reasonable fiscal constraints. The department's director and his staff continue to exemplify, year over year, their ability to deliver premium services to our residents and provide fiscal efficiencies. Completing our operational and capital resolution and resolution review, including the golf course and the harbor management revolving funds, your committee went to items with impact to park and recreation services. This brought us to the fees for design for the Dorothy Hamill rink, around which I will use the majority of my time to provide you with the discussion and evaluation of our motion-- our motion to delete and reduce. And in doing so, prepare you to consider the information and make an informed decision when we arrive at this section in the budget. Your Park and Recreation Committee is unique as it has been close to the process. And we send a dedicated liaison who attends a majority of the meetings and gives us updates. We are a diverse representation of the districts across the town, with many members involved in past or present roles on other volunteer positions in town, from Architectural Review Board to Harbor Management, to the Board of Park and Recreation, and even the Dorothy Hamill Rink Committee itself. After 50 years-- almost 50 years ago, Dorothy Hamill won the gold medal at the 1976 Olympics. When she returned home, she was honored in Greenwich with a parade that drawled just about everyone. At this time, the town honored her by naming the existing municipal rink in her honor. Director Siciliano explained the rink infrastructure has been a longstanding concern. The largest, but not only, comes from the concrete slab which transforms into ice during the seasonal winter months. Should the piping within the slab fail, ice skating, recreational or otherwise, will no longer be an available amenity to our residents. The director informed us that these funds gave us the possibility of planning ahead for the eventuality of a failure, being that the building has performed well past its useful life. To not plan and to not fund the design now To not plan and to not fund the design now jeopardizes the long-term existence of this resource for all of us. BET member Bill Drake, who also serves as the Chair of the Rink Committee, was appointed by the First Selectman. This committee is advisory-only working group with members of the Board of Park and Rec, representatives from Greenwich High School, Cardinal Youth Hockey, the Department of the Park and Recreation Board, and the Bay Area Neighborhood Association. Mr. Drake spoke to us not only about the school district served by the rink, but also the numerous classes open to all ages, sometimes as young as three, and youth activities that will be impacted permanently should a failure of the infrastructure occur and cause a long-term shuttering of the facility. He provided a handout showing a number of steps taken and progress made over the last few months. He asked the group to focus on a survey provided to the residents of just under 3,000 participants performed by the department using an outside consultant, showing overwhelming support for the site on Straza Field. The committee was assured that would no longer encroach on memorial property and that Western Middle School Field remediation would be completed before any work would be done on Straza Field. Lucia Jensen also attended the meeting and reported that while the BOC expressed support of the rink, they felt that completing the MI, the Municipal Improvement, with the Planning Commission was an important step by charter, and the project should fill the project to the RTM before the RTM's release of the full design. As Section 99 reads, "No action other than making of studies or surveys shall be taken by any town agency," and I'm paraphrasing, "of a major public building until such a proposal has been submitted to and approved by the commission or has been approved by the representative town meeting." It was noted that Eastern Civic Center's funding path also followed this precedent, but please note the "or." Therefore, the request for funds is not necessarily out of order, but it reflects in the votes of our committee that the present position of our committee would be that they would prefer this project to go through MI so that the project can address the following objections raised by committees themselves, the delegates, and residents. Some of those concerns remain about the relocation onto Straza Field in spite of the survey. A neighboring condominium resident suggested that the new entry and view to the backface of the rink was less preferable, and another expressed concern that residents of accompanying Caesar housing, senior housing, who overlooked the Straza Field to watch ballgames from an informal back porch on the hill would no longer be able to view baseball games. Committee discussion revolved around both the project sighting, and there were concerns raised around soil testing, given the rates of contamination at other sites. Lastly, removing the funding would in fact jeopardize the ability of Dorothy Hamill to continue its operation, leading to a number of votes not to remove. A number of factors. Ultimately, the vote to reduce was proposed by District 3 and District 4. The vote was 8-4-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. McKnight, Chairman of our Appointments Committee.
Yes, your Appointments Committee met prior to the meeting this evening. We combined all three resolutions. Our vote, 8-0-0.
Thank you very much. Brooks Harris, Chairman of our Finance Committee. He'll have seven minutes, if you can put that on the time clock, please.
Finance was joined by Dr. Tony Jones, Superintendent of Schools, Joe Kelly, Chairman of the Greenwich BOE, Tony Turner, the Chair of the CMS Building Committee, James Waters, the Chair of the OG Building Committee, Dan Aussizmir, the Chair of the BET, David Weissbrot of the BET, Peter Menarsky, who runs the Finance Department, and Bill Drake from the Hamill Rink. We spent considerable time reviewing the capital budget. Prior to the meeting, members were asked if they would like to vote on any cuts, and none were offered. Members were also advised that there were two debt authorizations before us that require a majority of RTM members for approval, not just of those present. Members were advised that if there were no cuts or amendments to any budgetary items, we would not take a formal vote, but report that the budget was generally acceptable. No objections were raised. Finance briefly reviewed the Finance Department budget of 2.5 million as we're required to do and found it to be in order. Finance next reviewed the capital budget summarized by the funding schedule produced by the Town Finance Department under the supervision of the BET and with input from the Office of Selectmen. Finance noted that there were significant improvements to the accuracy of inputs such as projected capital projects, and that the budget showed we would fund all our priorities and stay within all BET policy guidelines despite heavy projected spending in fiscal year 24 and 25. This primarily reflects the sustained increase in capital tax levy over time as well as a continued projected increase. Members pointed out that the analysis could miss unexpected future surprises, surprise needs, and could underestimate the cost of items that are in the budget. Members received the funding schedule as a spreadsheet and were free to play with the numbers to stress test the model. Members of the BET pointed out that if assumptions changed, the trajectory of the capital tax levy could be adjusted to match. Finance next reviewed our general fund balance, which is important as a rainy day fund for unexpected needs, as well as a buffer which underpins our AAA credit rating. The fund balance is projected to be 68.7 million, representing 14.8% of our budget. This is within but near the top of the BET guideline of 5% to 15% of our budget. Mr. Menarsky explained that this is one of the lowest fund balance ratios for any town in Connecticut that is rated AAA. Finance discussed the two debt authorizations, 95.6 million of general obligation bonds with maturities of no more than five years, consistent with BET policy, and $350,000 of sewer bonds whose maturities are not limited to five years by BET policy. The Finance Committee raised no objections to the proposed debt offerings. Finance briefly discussed the Nathaniel witherall and the recent write-off of 4.1 million, largely attributable to uncollectible accounts receivable. We basically forgot to ask the government to reimburse us for legitimate expenses, and when we found this out, it was too late to request payment. Both David Weissbrot and Dan Aussizmir of the BET affirmed that this was shocking and unacceptable, and that view cut across political lines. While this issue has likely been addressed, the Nathaniel witherall remains under review. Finance next discussed CMS, one of the largest capital expenditures Greenwich has ever undertaken. CMS is considered a priority and has been approved by the BET on a fast-track basis. Because of timing, no feasibility study was done, which meant the cost estimates were not as precise as might otherwise be the case. The BOE and schools had requested $87 million for this project. After significant debate, the BET approved 67 million. The CMS Building Committee and an independent assessor are preparing better estimates with the expectation of applying for partial state funding by the end of June. If the final estimates come in above the appropriated amount, 67 million, the BOE can try to adjust the ed specs and get new estimates and/or can seek an interim appropriation for the excess. In this case, timing will be very tight, and the CMS Building Committee is seeking guidance from the state if the June deadline for submission may be extended if needed. If we cannot hit the state timeline for funding, we may have to wait until in the next cycle to get approval, which could delay construction timing. Finance discussed HVAC and ADA compliance with Dr. Jones, and it was agreed more work and discussion on this topic was needed going forward. We next discussed OG. OG is scheduled to complete design and planning in fiscal year 24 and then seek full funding in fiscal year 25. 1.08 million is budgeted for fiscal year 24 for this project. When budgets were initially submitted in late 2022, the BOE had indicated a cost of 24.5 million for completion of the proposed OG renovation. In March of this year, James Waters, Chair of the OG Building Committee circulated a revised price estimate of 38.1 million. Most of this 55% increase was attributable to construction price inflation that had not been factored into the original request, with 10% of this increase attributable to more conservative allowances built in. As is customary for this type of discussion, spirited debate ensued, and a stricter application of Rogers-Roberts rules was implemented. The proposed renovation is for approximately 100% of the square footage of the school, but many areas such as the roof will not be addressed and may need replacement in the near future. One member questioned whether it would be better to replace the school since it's 100 years old and could generate ongoing maintenance issues at a time when we need to focus on other future school renovations. The BET is collecting professional estimates for the cost of renovation and the cost of building a new school, which will likely inform further debate. Mr. Waters indicated that building a new school lacked the support of school parents, and he was opposed to this alternative. He also indicated the possibility of seeking the 38.1 million as an interim appropriation in hopes of accelerating this process into fiscal year 24. Finance finally discussed the Hamill Rink. The BET has recommended 950,000 allocation to allow additional design work in anticipation of full project funding in fiscal year 25. This allocation is subject to several conditions, including P&amp;Z approval and completion of the MI process. We'll get a revised cost estimate for the project, and if it exceeds $11 million, this design funding would be subject to BET and RTM approval. Essentially, we're probably going to reject this thing, we're probably going to cut this out of the budget this evening, but if we didn't, it almost certainly would have to return to the RTM either for interim appropriation or to approve the MI if we chose. Given the late hour, one member wanted to vote to cut this issue, but we lost our quorum and couldn't vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Lucia Jansen, Chairwoman of the Budget Overview Committee. Five minutes, please.
Good evening. Once again, a huge thanks to all the town and Board of Ed leaders, our BET and Finance Department, department heads, volunteers, school parents involved in the fiscal year 24 budget. This fiscal year, the BOC's budget goals mirrored this year's BET fiscal year 24 budget guidelines. The BOC noted the BET's fiscal year 24 proposed general fund budget of 482.1 million exceeds some important parts of the BET's operating and capital guidelines. The BOC thanks the school superintendent and Board of Ed for meeting the school's departmental operating budget that met the 2.9% increase expressed. Both departmental BET guidelines exclude the employee fringe benefits and other fixed costs. The town exceeded the 2%, which came in at 2.9%. However, the primary reason was the BET's favorable response to restore funding for two of the five police officers to patrol the elementary and middle schools. The BET funded all five officers, increasing costs from 481,000 to 682,000. The Police Department was also funded a part-time property and evidence clerk with no cost offset. The Fire Department budget had increased driven by overtime due to vacancies and no floaters to curb overtime. The BOC discussed the BET guidelines' request to decrease both town and Board of Ed headcount. Once again, we thank the school's leadership that met the guidelines, reducing 15.32 of school personnel, including eight of those personnel paid with COVID funds. However, the town exceeded staffing with .07 in the general fund and 10.31 in the other funds, namely in the Nathaniel witherall increase with 8.83 new employees. The net town and Board of Ed headcount was a decrease of 4.94 fewer personnel. The BOC discussed the other departmental costs exceeding the guidelines and concluded we support the exceptions that were made by the BET, and no BOC motions were made for operating reductions or cuts. The BOC discussed that of the 578 million in fiscal year 24 general fund spending, over 70% is paid through property taxes and 17% from borrowing, which is later property taxes, and the town receives very small contribution from federal and state grants. The mill rate decreased due to a variety of factors which were mentioned earlier by Chair Aussizmir, with the high interest rate income of 2 million from the Comptroller's strategic move from cash to treasury bills, increase of our grant list from .7% to 1.23% and from an unexpected decrease in healthcare costs from 12% to 8% increase with the Connecticut State Healthcare Plan. The BET did increase the capital tax levy to 55 million versus the 53 million described in the BET budget guidelines, due to many maintenance capital items moving to the operating budget, which the capital tax levy funds. The Comptroller is essentially done and complying with auditors having moved over 6 million in capital maintenance items to the operating budget in the last three years. The BOC remains concerned with Nathaniel witherall's quality operations and fiscal stability. As we all read and now have heard tonight, Nathaniel witherall had another $4 million write-off of bad debt. Through the BET's audit, the members learned Nathaniel witherall's personnel were the issue around these collections. The BOC's discussion also included that apart from the accounts receivable problems, there is a $5.4 million shortfall since revenues are not covering expenses. The Board of Selectmen is looking to fill four new Nathaniel witherall board members' vacancies. The BOC discussed addressing the operational cost issues when evaluating those future board members, since the RTM has limited authority with Nathaniel witherall's budget. The BOC then discussed the 112 million proposed capital spending. We essentially supported it all with the three large school projects. And finally, the BOC discussed and approved unanimously by voice vote the various revolving funds, including the sewer maintenance, sewer improvement, Nathaniel witherall, school lunch, parking.
Time. Thank you.
Time.
Thank you. Ms. Jansen, did I understand that the BOC is going to offer a motion to delete later?
Yes.
And you did not include any of that in your report?
No, I did not.
Is that correct?
No.
Okay. So could you at least share with us the vote on that, perhaps? I think it's important, if you actually took a vote on something, to hear what the vote was.
For the Hamill Rink?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Yes, it was nearly unanimous. It was 10 in favor of the reduction of 950,000, one opposed, and one district was absent, which was District 1.
Thank you. Kimberly Blank, Chairwoman of our Education Committee. Five minutes, please. Oh, no, she gets seven. She gets seven. I'm sorry.
Don't cheat me out of two. All right. Good evening, everyone. Your Education Committee met on Monday, May 1st, with 11 districts present, District 9 absent. We considered and voted on Item 3, the fiscal year 24 budget. The Education Committee considered almost $295 million in operating capital and ARP grant appropriations for seven different departments. Our budget coverage runs from November, when the Superintendent first presents a budget to the BOE, to May, when we take a final vote on the BET's proposed budget. At our March meeting, we had a detailed presentation on the Board of Ed budget. At our April meeting, we had presentations from Greenwich Library and the Parrott Library, DPW and the Department of Health. The Bruce Museum and Department of Parks and Rec submitted written reports to the committee, and each member of our committee served as a liaison to individual schools or departments to cover their budgets more in depth. At our May meeting, we had representatives of the Board of Ed and BET to answer questions. Presenters included Dr. Tony Jones, Joe Kelly, Blaise Levitan, Nisha Aurora, Harry Fisher, and Laura Erickson. We also had representatives from PTA Council speak to us in favor of passing this year's budget. While they are concerned about the patchwork approach to some of the school building projects, they believe that the building committees will make good use of the funds appropriated. On the seven non-Board of Education departments that we cover, the committee voted 11-0-0 to support all operating and capital appropriations. These operating budgets were generally in line with BET guidelines. Noted capital items include $4 million for DPW to complete soil remediation at the high school, $200,000 for Parks and Rec's field master plan, and funds for boiler replacement at Parrott Library and a new hot water heater at the Bruce. Some members of the committee expressed disappointment that the BET did not fund capital projects for renovations at Cos Cob Library and elevator replacement at Greenwich Library. The bulk of our presentation and discussion surrounded the school's budgets. The school's operating budget is $182.3 million, which came in right at the BET's 2.9% guideline. We voted 11-0-0 to approve. We voted 10-0-1 to approve the $86.2 million Board of Ed capital budget. Next year's capital budget is the largest ever, with the Board of Education slated to receive nearly three-quarters of total town capital spending. Projects include 67.5 million for Central Middle, 10 million for remediation at Western, which many members are happy is finally moving forward, 1.1 million for A&amp;E at Old Greenwich, 800,000 for the Julian Curtis renovation, 2.1 million for ADA compliance, 500,000 for sewer maintenance at Old Greenwich, 1.3 million for reinforcing the district's network infrastructure, and 3 million in various maintenance projects. We discussed many of these projects in detail, but spent the most time on Central Middle School. Many members of the committee are concerned that the $67.5 million budgeted will not be sufficient to meet the Board of Ed specs. They questioned the BET's role in setting a budget that essentially requires the Board of Ed to change its ed specs. Members of the BET replied that they believe the BET plays an important role in reflecting the views of the full community as to what level of funding and what size building the community wants. There was a lot of discussion around the sizing of Central Middle School and whether it should be sized for a projected number of students versus sizing it to meet the two-team middle school teaching model. The revised specifications call for 28 classrooms to accommodate two teams. This may be more than would be built based solely on the number of students projected for the school. Some members of the committee said that they feel the process has become overly politicized to the detriment of the project. We were told that the building committee should have a good construction cost estimate by the end of May. If they feel they need to ask for additional funds, they should be able to do it before they need to submit the proposal to the state at the end of June. In our discussion of the capital budget, several members were concerned about projects that were cut back or deleted. We discussed the deletion of money to finish tree work at Cardinal Stadium, the removal of an HVAC project from Hamilton Avenue, the decision by both the First Selectmen and the BET not to move forward with a solution to the lack of cell service at the high school, and the decision to cut maintenance budgets without specifying which projects the BET is intending to fund or cut. As I said, we did vote 10-0-1 to approve the capital budget. District 12 abstained because they believed that the Old Greenwich and Central Middle School project should have received greater funding. We voted 11-0-0 to appropriate 4.5 million for the school lunch revolving fund. For the past two years, all students have been provided with free meals through federal and state funds. As a result, the revolving fund has been running a positive balance for the first time in years, and next year, the fund is not expected to require a net contribution from the town. The Board of Ed views this as a one-time opportunity. In future years, as operations return to pre-COVID practices, it expects that the lunch fund will require net funding. We were told that the possibility of extending free meals for all students is being explored at the state. at the state level, but that there is no plan for it at this time. We voted 10-0-1 to approve $1.9 million in ARP funds for the Board of Ed. This is the last of three years of grants for COVID relief. Next year, the Board of Ed plans to spend nearly $2.9 million in ARP funds, including unspent funds from prior years. This will fund 11 FTEs in their operating budget. They have also set aside $800,000 to purchase materials for a new state-mandated reading program. They've applied for a waiver from this mandate, but have set the money aside in case the state does move forward with the requirement. District 10 abstained on this vote because they do not support a state-mandated curriculum and believe there is time to consider the funding at a later date when the waiver issue is settled. We voted 11-0-0 to approve Resolutions 43 through 48 and 54B. These are resolutions authorizing the acceptance of funds by Board of Ed and the libraries. We also voted 11-0-0 to approve the borrowing authorization. Overall, our committee supports the BET's proposed budgets for the schools and various departments that we cover. Some members support the budget despite their concerns that there should be more funding for various projects. We also discussed the challenges facing the Board of Ed for next year's operating budget as they will need to manage higher contractual costs and either absorb the positions currently funded by ARP funds or make difficult choices to reduce services. I want to thank the members of the committee who worked as school and department liaisons to cover this year's budget. Their reports are compiled and available to read on the Education Committee website. I also would like to thank the numerous members of the Board of Education, the BET, and the various town departments who have met with us repeatedly as we work to understand this year's budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Allison Solar, Chairwoman of Health and Human Services Committee. Dan, show up five minutes.
Good evening, moderator, fellow RTM members and guests. Your Health and Human Services Committee met on April 4th and May 2nd to review the following department budgets: Nathaniel Witherall, Human Services, GEMS, Commission on Aging, and Health. Budget subcommittees of HHS also met with each of the department heads and shared their findings with the committee. So first up, Nathaniel Witherall. Larry Simon had just resigned from the Board for personal reasons, and Brad Markowitz was just elected chair, and he was unable to attend due to the short notice. John Masternardi, Executive Director, presented a $31.3 million budget, which includes an assumption of a 7% increase in revenue. He stated this is aggressive but achievable as they currently have a 180-bed census and the budget is based on a census of 188. He explained that they have a more robust admissions outreach program and are creating greater access for short-term patients, which has a higher turnover but also higher net revenue. Two-thirds of the budget expenses for staff, 136 positions and 12 current vacancies. He explained they are currently staffed for a four-star staffing rating. He also said they are ready for the next survey, which is what determines the star rating, and that they expect to be surveyed anytime now through June. The facility currently has a three-star rating up from one. As you've heard tonight, their accounts receivable is still an issue with the $4 million write-off. He told us approximately $5 million had been collected towards the $12 million total outstanding. They are using a collection firm but believe the private pay funds are less collectible and the private pay total is $2.2 million. Our vote on that budget was 10-0-0 with Districts 1 and 2 absent. Department of Human Services, Demetria Nelson, Commissioner, stated that their current budget is 11% under budget due to additional funds from ARPA, and next year's budget has an increase of 1.2%. It's $48,000 due to contractual salary increases, some increased costs to the client data system, mandatory training, and some transportation for summer programs. They did find savings by decreasing the amount of space they rented bank and decreased funding for a community partner because of the opioid settlement they received that they could give back to the program. They served 2,100 households and 4,588 individuals in fiscal year '22. Our vote on that budget was 10-0-0, Districts 1 and 2 absent. GEMS, Tracy Scheitinger, Executive Director, and Rob Segacy, Board Chair, presented their $4.8 million budget and stated it will remain flat for next year, so that's a 0% increase. She explained that they are able to do this because they are back to pre-pandemic transport numbers, which is how they generate revenue. Station 4 was completed in November. GEMS is a private nonprofit, and they raise private funds for all their capital needs, including replacing one ambulance each year. The vote was 10-0-0, Districts 1 and 2 absent on that budget. Commission on Aging and the Wallace Center, Lori Contadino, Director, and Stephen Katz, Board Chair, presented their budget with a 1.69% increase due to contractual salary obligations, and also the note they have consolidated the commission and the senior center budget to one budget. They have renamed the senior center, now the Wallace Center, named after Mary Louise Wallace, whose request will fund renovations and programming, new programming. Ms. Contadino explained the benefit of removing the word "senior" from the name as it takes the stigma away, since many people don't want to think of themselves as seniors, especially as they now have lowered the entry age to 55 and older. She stated there are 14,600 adults aged 65 and older in Greenwich, and it's expected that by 2030, one in five people in this country and in Greenwich will be 65 years or older. Our vote on that budget was 11-0-0 with District 5 absent. The last budget is Department of Health. Carolyn Basely, Director of Health, and Matt Angenito, Business Office Manager, presented the budget to the committee with a 1.78% increase in their budget for a total of $2.65 million. She explained that because next year is an extra day for leap year, that one-day cost for her staff totals $9,000 in salaries. 90% of the budget is for full-time and few part-time salaries. Increases also include funds for mosquito program, lab equipment, machinery, parts, supplies. Inflation has impacted these items. She stressed that she looks for state grants for everything she possibly can, and with state grants, they funded copiers, data for iPads, overtime, temporary environmental position, and a part-time lab assistant. Our vote was 11-0-0 and District 5 absent on that budget. And I'd just like to make a last quick comment, that these departments serve the most valuable and most vulnerable in our community, and I believe it is a real reflection of who we are as a town and a community, how we approach and fund these departments. I want to thank all the department chairs for meeting with us and answering our questions over and over, and they meet with us regularly throughout the year. Your Health and Human Services Committee unanimously voted for all, you know, in support of all these budgets, so thank you for supporting these departments.
Thank you very much. Richard Newman, Chair of our Town Services Committee. Everyone else now, Dan gets five minutes from here on out.
Madam Moderator, members of the RTM, and esteemed guests. Over the last three months, Town Services met with the senior staffs of our 13 assigned departments to discuss the 2023 and 24 budgets and operating plans. I can't begin to cover our discussions tonight. I will not try. All of our departments' operating budgets were within guidelines. After accounting for special items, all major increases and decreases were explained. Town Services would like to thank all involved in the budget process. It starts shortly and continues for a year. Two thoughts. Many departments reported it is harder to hire qualified personnel. Both starting salary levels and commutes to Greenwich are a headwind for many positions. Second thought is the BET should be very careful when deleting emergency services capital requests to satisfy mil rate goals. Please find your dollars elsewhere. Town Services voted 10-0-0 in favor of our reviewed budgets, with no motions to delete. Districts 3 and 12 were absent. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have one announcement. There's a car out in the parking lot with the license plate AA85220 that has a directional light that's left on. It looks like it's a black Mercedes. So if that is your license plate, AA85220, you've left your lights on. Okay. Who's next? Mr. Spilo, Chairman of the Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. As has been our practice over the past years, Public Works Committee broke into six subcommittees, which each reviewed a part of the Public Works budget. Each subcommittee created a report on their area, and we also heard reports from four currently active Building Committee RTM members who are appointed by Public Works. We met on May 1st to discuss the report and proposed changes to the budget. I'd like to thank all the members of the committee who worked tirelessly, not doing well today, tirelessly to prepare these reports, and as well as members of the Department of Public Works and the BET who helped us. We took up discussion of additional funding for the Hamill Rink first, which we voted to cut by a vote of 8-2-2. I will make that motion when the appropriate time. The DPW operating budget was up over 3.9%, well above guidance. This was primarily due to a few issues. Electricity rates went up sharply, leading to a $200,000 raise. Waste disposal costs were up 4.3% over last year's budget, which was flat relative to the previous year. These cost increases are due to increased volume and higher disposal costs, both due to gas prices and the labor costs which affect the economics of haulers. The committee discussed increasing tipping fees to cover these costs, and Commissioner Seabird indicated that DPW was considering this, but that there were trade-offs. Highway material costs were up 5.5%, comprised primarily of asphalt, and building construction materials were up 3.8%. We requested but did not receive a breakdown of the paving costs. This breakdown report was last provided in 2018. On the capital side, the largest projects were $4 million for what is hopefully the last tranche of the Greenwich High School field remediation, which, including the $4 million, has so far totaled $44 million in 2023. The annual paving program is holding at $3.5 million with the three prior year's average. The highway maintenance program is an additional $1.75 million for traffic signs, traffic signals, and road repairs other than new paving. There is an additional $1.8 million for ongoing Eastern Civic Center work, and $3 million for upcoming placement of the North Street Bridge, which is at the bottom of the hill at North Street near Andrews and Cotswold. We were informed that the bridge for this project, the construction for this project would last two years, during which time the section of North Street would be down to one lane with traffic alternating direction controlled by a light. After hearing subcommittee reports, we voted on the budget as amended 11-0-1, with the abstention objecting to the proposed cut to the Hamill Rink. On the Hamill Rink, I still have some time. On the Hamill Rink, our discussion lasted about an hour and a half, and I'll try to summarize that briefly. The motion to cut was made on the basis of Section 99 on the Charter, which requires an MI, prior to approval of preliminary funding. They pointed that the rink has sufficient funding to complete designs before the MI. I'm going to go through this quickly, and then if we have an opportunity, perhaps I'll go through it in more detail afterwards. Residents felt that the facility was too large and too close to the existing buildings, and that the road would put traffic in front of residents who are currently in front of a baseball field. Neighbors, we also discussed whether the town could suffer through an 18-month closure of the rink while a new one was built. Some felt that a lack of available ice time, while others pointed to a new double rink under construction in Stamford. We also discussed the price tag, which the BET analysis seems to indicate was closer to $11 million than $21 million. In any event, as I said, we voted to cut the rink 8-2-2. Thank you.
And on his maiden voyage for Land Use Committee, Andrew Malillo, who is sitting in for Peterburg this evening.
Good evening, Madam Moderator and members. I'll be very brief. We met in April and this past May 1st. On April 3rd, we spoke with Beth Evans, the Director of Environmental Affairs. She answered questions from the committee, and we reviewed Items 172 and 173 in the budget, and it was 12-0-0. Bernard Armstrong, Chair of the Harbor Commission, did the same for his commission for the Harbor Management, and 12-0-0. And Jude Collins and Sadar Umar for the Condemnation Commission were voted 12-0-0 to be reappointed with a $2,000 budget. I don't think they've met since 2007, since the bonding project for sewer. So on May 1st, we met, and we had Stephen Self present, who was the liaison for the BET for the Land Use Committee, on the following operating budgets. Item 1, we had taken up 161 and 171. And for the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals and Planning and Zoning Operations budget, Patrick LaRoe, the Director of Planning and Zoning, spoke to us and about his department and his staffing and the budget. In the coming year, P&amp;Z plans to report to the RTM on the status of the POCD, also to review the zoning at the US1 corridor in Riverside, and also for the zoning in the Bayram neighborhood in District 4. Those items were 11-0-0 in favor, District 7 was absent. For Item 312, we had Jim Michael, Deputy Commissioner of Public Works, Peter Kapeski, Highway Superintendent, and Nicholas Charlo, Highway Planning and Program Manager from DPW. They spoke to the committee. Items that were brought up were the North Street Bridge replacement project. Mr. Michael's further mentioned that the BET cut the requested budget for paving roads from $4.25 million to $3.5, which would potentially result in less roadway being repaved. A specialized vehicle scans the roadways and reports on the condition of each road to help identify which roads are a priority. Highway maintenance was reduced from $2 million to $1.5. There are various retaining walls throughout town that they'll be reviewing. One of the main ones that was brought up was the retaining wall in front of Whole Foods on East Putnam Avenue. And then it was mentioned that there's currently no funding for new sidewalks, but there will be money for sidewalk repairs as it moves forward. Mr. Michael's also mentioned the Complete Streets program. The town is applying for a grant to create a plan for the town as a whole for street maintenance, including bicycles, and this would lead to further grants if they're accepted. That was voted in favor, 11-0-0, District 7 absent. For the budget resolutions as a package, some members of the committee expressed concern with voting on the entire package because many of the resolutions may not particularly be relevant to the committee's purview and therefore decide to abstain. That was voted in favor, 7-0-4, with four abstentions. And if you need to know which districts abstained, it was 1, 2, 4, and 12. And lastly, our selectwoman, Lauren Raymond, answered questions about the Central Middle School budget. The Land Use did not vote on the item. And that's the report.
Thank you very much. Kimberly Salib with our Transportation Committee report.
Good evening, Madam Moderator and members of the RTM. My name is Kimberly Salib, and I chair the Transportation Committee. Over the past two Transportation Committee meetings, we met with six town departments and agencies to discuss their '23-'24 budget and the plans for the upcoming year. At our most recent meeting, David Weisbrod from the BET was present to answer any of our questions. We first met with Deputy Chief Craig Gray of Parking Services. The Parking Fund is the town's only enterprise fund. Regarding the operating costs for the budget, they are saving $135,000 due to a reduction of credit card fees. On the revenue side, he told the committee that the town is losing money because we're undercharging for our meters compared to other towns. He said other towns charge more than Greenwich and believes we should increase meter rates. As for the capital budget, Parking Services requested $305,000 for the replacement of single and double meters. Deputy Chief Gray also told the committee that a major capital project will be coming up in the near future, which is the repaving of the Plaza Garage Lot. Next, we met with Jay Damasek from Fleet Management. He noted that the major increase in the operating budget was due to the increase in prices for diesel fuels, gasoline, and other motor oils. He said the prices are locked in until the end of September 2023. However, the town will have to go out to bid in October 2023, and the next contract will reflect the spiking increase for motor vehicle fuels. In the approved BET capital budget, the Fleet Department includes a Friar ladder truck, four police vehicles, four vehicles for DPW, three vehicles for Parks and Recs, and one van for the BOE. Next, we met with Dr. Ann Caraballo, Deputy Superintendent, who is in charge of the BOE buses. The budget for the BOE transportation increases 3% each year. The budget for the BOE transportation increases 3% each year based on the contract, which is with the bus company First Students. Dr. Caraballo discussed the recent bus strike, which has officially been referred to as a sick-out. She did point out that we have received about $1 million back in penalties from First Students, the bus company, due to failed contractual terms and penalties. Next, we met with Jim Michaels, Deputy Commissioner of DPW, which we've already discussed here tonight. Then we met with Mike Miller, who is the TAG Board Member and Treasurer. TAG has worked in partnership with Neighbor to Neighbor and the Department of Human Services. TAG's feed Greenwich weekly home deliveries have supported over 2,600 Greenwich residents since 2020 and have delivered over 800,000 pounds of nutritious food and groceries throughout Greenwich. TAG provides specialized transportation for seniors and disabled individuals and school-aged youth. Lastly, we met with JEM's Executive Director, Tracy Scheitinger, and her team. JEM's is not a town department. Instead, it operates within its independent 501(c)(3) nonprofit contract with the town. And JEM, we've already covered JEM's here tonight, too. And JEM's is able to fundraise enough each year to cover the cost of its capital expenditures. So we then had a discussion with BET David Weisbrod, and we took a vote. And the motion to approve the budget passed in the Transportation Committee. The vote was 5, 4, 0 with 3 absent. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, but certainly not least, Kipper Gregor with the report of the Legislative and Rules Committee.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, members of the RTM, and the illustrious guests. Legislative and Rules met last Monday. We had 11 delegates present. And as I mentioned before, District 10 had communication difficulties, so could not participate. We divided our analysis of the budget matters to three parts. The first was Resolutions 1 through 54 and the additional provisions. Second was the $95 million bonding for capital budget and the $350,000 bond for the sewage system. The third were the budgets for the Law Department, line item 140, and the Probate Court, line item 111. We were, Resolutions 154 and additional provisions. As you know, Legislative and Rules spends more time on wording than on numbers. And we looked at these provisions. Members of the committee asked why certain resolutions regarding donated funds and grants required BET approval for appropriations, while other resolutions did not. Karen Fasiliotis explained that the BET was seeking to simplify the appropriation process and, wherever possible, required only reporting rather than an approval process to keep track of funding. We found two sets of scrivener errors, and when we voted on this, we voted as if they had been corrected. The delegate from District 2 noted that throughout the budget items, the term personnel, AL, services is used to refer to salaries and staff expenses rather than the more conventional term personnel, EL, expenses. A lively discussion ensued, but as the committee could not determine if the words "personal" services were being used deliberately as normal convention or if this was a result of system error, it was decided to table the matter for future deliberations. Various printing and formatting errors were noted, and Karen Fasiliotis volunteered to bring these errors to the attention of the staff for review and correction. Our vote on the Resolutions and additional provisions, 11-0-0 on legal order and the merits. On the bonding resolutions, the delegate from District 7 asked why the capital budget bond series was limited to a term of five years, while the sewage system bond had a maturity of up to 20 years. He noted that the yield curve is inverted, that long-term rates are lower than short-term rates, and that the town could save money and reduce cash flow burdens by issuing longer-dated bonds for the capital budget. He also noted that it is sensible to match long-term assets, for example, a school that could last for 50 to 100 years with long-term bond funding. Karen Fasiliotis mentioned that it is a practice of the BET and the Comptroller to issue bonds on an as-needed basis, and not all of the funding for the capital budget is required upfront. The District 6 delegate and me noted that this is the way funding has been managed historically, and there was general aversion to incurring debt. Another delegate asked, a person who was raising these issues, if he'd ever paid any attention to what was happening in Greenwich. He had, I assure you. The bonds of the capital budget and sewage system passed 11-0-0 on legal order and the merits. Then we turn to the budgets for the Law Department and Probate Court. We had had last month Attorney Town Attorney Schellenberg to give us details on the budget. And when I asked if she had any further details to deliver now, she explained that the 2% increase in the Law Department budget was due to an increase in fees for outside counsel, some increased costs for temporary help, and increased rental costs. The town attorney also noted that the law budget would likely increase going forward due to litigation that is ongoing. Members of the committee expressed some concerns about how the ongoing investigations and interviews for litigation are being managed. The town attorney noted that the investigation is not in the hands of the town and that after receiving the final report, the town attorney would provide advice on how to proceed. The Probate Court budget is very small. It ranges between $40,000 and $42,000 from year to year. The town is required to cover some of the expenses of the Probate Court, and this has been a perpetually easy item to approve. Our vote on the budgets for Law Department and Probate Court were 11-0-0 on legal order and the merits. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes all of our committee reports. So let me just summarize how we're going to proceed forward from this point. The operative document for the remainder of this meeting is the 40-page handout that was included in your call packet. We have extra copies of it up here if anyone would like it. It's dated, on the footer it says, RTM, April 14, 2023. I'm going to begin on page 1, reading the major object codes one by one by one. If someone has a motion addressed to any of those items, you must get my attention when I reach that major object code. I'm aware of all the motions that are being proposed by the committees. I'm not aware of any individual who's proposing a motion. It is certainly within your right as an individual to offer a motion to amend from the floor, but we will need to know when you intend to offer that motion. For the motions, we are aware of there are signup sheets, and we'll go through them at the end. Once I have passed a major object code, we are not going back to revisit that code. So it's critical that everybody is following along and paying attention. If anyone is participating online and would like to offer a motion that we are not aware of, please contact your district chair or somebody who's in the meeting so that that person can act as an intermediary, get my attention when I get to that major object code, and then we'll find you in the gallery and allow you to say whatever you'd like to say if you intend to make an emotion. Item number 3 is the main motion. It's the budget for 2224. As you know, the RTM can approve an item. It can delete an item, or it can reduce a line item. It cannot go above and beyond whatever the BET has recommended. All motions are going to be treated as a motion to amend item 3, but because we don't want to confuse people, we won't do a motion to amend, a pending motion to amend. So we'll take all the motions to amend as they come up. After we reach the American Rescue Plan on page 21, we'll take up any amendments to the language of the budget resolutions. I think Eleanor has a couple that they'll be offering. After we dispose of all the motions to amend on item 3, as well as any amendments to our budget language, we will take a vote on item 3, potentially as amended. We are then going to take two separate votes on bonding, one for the capital and one for the sewer. And each of those must be approved by a majority of the membership, which is 116. And our charter stipulates that if we fail to adopt a budget by May 15th, then the budget as recommended by the BET will take effect. Okay? So if anyone needs a copy, you're welcome to come up and get it. Otherwise, I'm going to start reading, okay? 101, Representative Town Meeting. 102, Ethics. 103, Historical District Commission. 104, Emergency Operations. 105, Office of the First Selectman. 106, Purchasing. 107, Administrative Services. 109, Human Resources. 111, Probate Court. 120, Register our Voters. 130, Finance. 134, Information Technology. 135, Assessor. 136, Board of Assessment Appeals. 139, Tax Collector. 140, Law. 150, Town Clerk. 161, Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals. 170, Condemnation Commission. 171, Planning and Zoning Commission. 172, Conservation Commission. 173, Inland Wetland and Watercourses One Word Agency. 175, Land Use Administration. 195, Commission on Aging. Now we go to the Fire Department. 201, Fire Administration. 202, Fire Training. 204, Fire Marshal. 205, Fire Fighting Force. 206, Fire Apparatus and Equipment. 207, Fire Department Buildings. 208, Volunteers. Now we're in the Police Department. 211, Police Administration. 212, Police Dispatch and Communications. 213, Police General Services. 216, Police Criminal Investigation. 217, Police Uniform Patrol. Now we go to Public Works. 301, DPW Administration. 302, DPW Engineering. 312, Highway, Streets, and Bridges. 315, Highway BOE Maintenance. 321, Waste Disposal. 345, Building Construction and Maintenance. 351, Building Inspection. Now we're in Vehicle Maintenance. 380, Fleet. Health Department. 401, Health Administration. 405, Health Environmental. 410, Health Special Clinical Services. 415, Health, Family Health. 425, Laboratory. External Entities. 440, External Entities. Human Services. 501, Human Services Administration. 502, Human Services Adult and Family Services. 509, Human Services Aging Homemaker Only Services. Schools. 600, BOE Administration. 620, BOE Instruction. 640, BOE Plant Operations. 650, BOE Plant Maintenance. 660, BOE Pupil Transportation. 675, BOE Student Activities. Now we go to Libraries. 701, Greenwich Library. 702, Peterson Wing. 710, Parat Library. Parks and Recreation. 801, Parks and Rec Administration. 811, Parks and Rec Supervision. 812, Recreation, Organized Recreation. 814, Eastern Greenwich, Eastern Civic Center. 815, Community Centers. 816, Skating Rink. 817, Western Civic Center. 821, Parks and Trees Administration. 822, Parks and Trees, Parks and Playground and Fields. 825, Equipment Maintenance. 829, Trees. 831, Marine Supervision. 832, Marine Maintenance. 833, Beaches. 834, Harbors and Boating Facilities. Now we're in Fixed Charges. 901, Employee Benefits. 902, Unemployment and Workers' Compensation. 908, Insurance. 911, Taxes for Town Properties. 950, Repayment of Debt Principal. 999, Transfer to Other Funds. That is the last of our operational. Now we're on to Capital. Ms. Jansen, shortly you are going to be called to give your motion. I'm just letting you know. Capital Projects. 134, Information Technology. 206, Fire Apparatus. 213, Police General Services. 312, DPW Highway, Streets, and Bridges. 315, DPW B.E. Projects Done by DPW. I believe this is where your BOC motion comes into play. 345, DPW Building Construction and Maintenance. Correct? Ms. Jansen, are you offering that motion?
Yes, the BOC is offering the motion to reduce the $950,000 funding in account 345, DPW Building Construction and Maintenance, Hamill Rink Facility Improvements by $950,000 to a reduced total of zero.
Okay. Did you mention it's 956-243-21? Did you give the account number?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that motion being offered on behalf of a committee does not require a second and is now before us. Would you care to give your committee report on that?
Yes.
Dan, could you set it for five minutes, please?
All right. Well, we now have heard from Mr. Drake, who has recommended deleting the Hamill appropriation. However, I will start with the report. The Budget Overview Committee discussed in detail the new $950,000 appropriation request. Further, as Chair of the BOC, I attended the RTM Public Works and PR Committee meetings, who also took up the new Hamill Rink appropriation. Unfortunately, in all three RTM meetings, a lot of frustration was expressed by RTM members with the erratic trajectory this project has taken since the RTM originally funded the Hamill Rink replacement in 2019 with over $430,000 for the project to move forward and apply and receive municipal improvement. A little history is helpful to understand the RTM's frustration. In December 2021, it was surprisingly first revealed at the Planning and Zoning MI meeting, the Hamill Rink project had greatly expanded to a large-scale park renovation. The alterations included flipping the rink building with the ball field to place the rink in the center of the park, building a new 36-foot-wide road with sidewalks cutting through the middle of the park, changing the current entrance from Sherman Avenue to Western Junior Highway, increased the operating season from six months to 12 months a year, putting further constraint to the adjacent shared parking for the ball field and rink users. Further, other Merlot Park stakeholders included the Byram and Chickahominy residents and town veterans, who we have heard tonight, who have 13 Memorial Grove trees at the park, responded with many questions and, in general, a negative reaction to the park redesign. P&amp;Z members had several questions and comments to these significant changes, including the possible traffic issues with the new entrance, environmental impact regrading the entire property, deep trenching need for utilities if the rink were to be built in a different location. Thus, the Hamill Rink proponents retreated and did not file the formal MI. Since 2021, the RTM has rejected twice the BET's proposed May budget appropriations with conditions that bypasses receiving MI since the RTM rightfully does not want to cede its budget authority to the BET. So it really feels like Groundhog Day, where once again, the proponents in fiscal year '24 are requesting the exact same budget appropriation denied before. This third time, the BET has added three more conditions along with the MI approval. They are: Item A, a report will be presented to the BET that shows the results and recommendation with the possibility of privatizing the Hamill Ice Rink. Item C, an independent construction cost estimate presented to the BET, bless you, laying out costs of the rink, relocation of field, and a new 36-foot-wide road. Item D also presents the BET an itemized budget if the project exceeds $11 million, which most RTM members of the three committees believe will occur. which most RTM members of the three committees believe will occur. In all cases, if the RTM approves the funding tonight, we will have no involvement when those deliverables are made to the BET, and it will be exclusively the 12 members of the BET who decide the release of the $950,000 funds for the design documents. I do want to state very emphatically and strongly there is widespread support among RTM members for the Hamill Rink replacement. Today, there are sufficient funds for municipal improvement, and everyone in this room is anxious for that to get done. So for reasons described above, the BOC, the Department of Public Works Committee, and the Parks and Rec Committees all voted to delete the $950,000 appropriation. The BOC vote, as I said earlier, was 10-1-0 with District 1 absent. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. LeBalbo, do I understand that you... Ms. LeBalbo? I understand you gave your report already, correct?
I did.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Spilo, do you have anything to add to the two reports we've just heard?
In particular, I think one point that Bear is considering is the fact that if we go through with this and give them the funds they're requesting, and then the MI project is rejected, we've wasted these funds essentially because they'll have proceeded down the design process. So I think from a fiscally prudent perspective, it doesn't make sense. I understand the proponents have withdrawn. So point of information, do we still...
Well, you can't withdraw. The proponents can't withdraw.
The opponents have withdrawn.
You can't withdraw. You have to have a motion to delete. They can say that they are supporting the motion to delete, but you cannot withdraw.
I understand. The question is about the number of speakers. Are we going to go through all the speakers and...
Are you done giving your committee report?
Well, how much I go into is...
No, no, this is a committee report.
Okay, that's fine.
I'd like to hear that.
So let's see. Our motion to cut was made by District 8, seconded by District 11. Concerns were raised that the allocation of funds was counted in Section 99 of the Charter, which requires the MI be approved. They pointed out the rink had sufficient funds to complete designs for an MI application and have had such funds for over a year. RTM previously cut the request for additional funding prior to an MI. Members did not understand why the MI had not yet been filed. Others were concerned that without an MI in place, we didn't really know what would be built and therefore should withhold funding prior to final designs being completed. Some felt that conditions placed by the BET was sufficient, while others felt that the RTM should have a say after the MI was approved. We discussed that an MI could be appealed to the RTM regardless of the BET approval, and the BET approval was conditioned on the MI appeal process. Others objected to the size of the facility and questioned the need and appropriateness of showers in a public facility in this time of increasing concern of drug-resistant pathogens and heightened issues and propensity for lawsuits. We heard from several committee members who live in the area that they and their neighbors were concerned about the larger rink being placed on top of nearby properties, and we heard objections regarding to the relocation of the playfield away from the community. Neighbors were also concerned about a new roadway running right outside their windows, as I had mentioned. We also discussed whether we could suffer through an 18-month closure of the rink while a new one was built in place, and some cited the lack of available ice time as an objection, while others pointed to a new double rink under construction in Stamford. That's all I have to add.
Okay. Further debate on the BOC motion to delete the $950,000. I did ask Public Works if they would be interested in speaking. They are not. They have ceded the role to the opponent, to Mr. Drake. Mr. Drake, you may have the floor and make whatever comments you would like regarding this motion.
Thank you. Good evening. After communication with all the stakeholder groups, I'd like to encourage the RTM to vote for the motion to delete the $950,000 rink appropriation. You got an email about that a couple hours ago. Mr. Ozesmier read it. I'm sorry it was so late. Deleting this item in accordance with the motion by the BOC will allow the Department of Public Works to bring the rink back in a month or a few months as an interim appropriation after municipal improvement approval by the Board of Selectmen, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the RTM. You know, a methodical and close review in the next weeks of this project has everyone's support. It has the support of the Selectmen's Office. It has the support of the BET. It has the support of the Rink User Committee for Design and Planning. It has the support of many RTM members and many RTM committees. I hope it earns your support, too. Everyone wants a rink, and everyone wants MI to be done. So let's build a high-quality project with your support and everyone's support. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Let's just go down the speaker list. Adam Leader. Rick Lowe. I'm sorry, what? All right. Let me just tell you why I'm a little hesitant. A majority of the speakers who have signed up are not RTM members. So if they are here, I think that they should be entitled to be given an opportunity. So if people want to pass, they can. But if someone wants to... If they've made an effort to come out, I'd like to make sure that they have an opportunity to do that. Okay. I think it'll go quickly. There are only 14 people on the list. Adam Leader has passed. Rick Lowe. Phil, did you reach out to him, Mr. Drake?
He's not...
Okay. Liz Eckert, who is online, I believe.
Could we ask any online members to raise their hand?
Right. If you are participating online, could you please raise your hand just so we can find you quickly?
Hi, this is Liz Eckert. I'm going to pass.
Thank you very much. Glenn Kaner. Daniel Griffin. Nancy Lemey. Phil Dodson. Jack Duffy. Joseph Kantorski. Lucy Von Brockel. Dan, she gets two minutes.
Thank you, everybody. I just wanted to raise the fact that part of the problem here for the last three years has been a matter of process. We don't have a very great process for town-side capital projects. Unlike schools, we don't have building committees. The committee that's been advising on this is the First Selectmen's Advisory Committee. They didn't come through us. And I think that that has created some issues. Over the past three years, I've attended a lot of meetings. It's been extremely frustrating to watch this process unfold so awkwardly. And I do think that we should take a second look at how this has worked, how we're going to manage this project going forward so that, you know, we don't continue to have meetings like this where we spend a lot of time discussing this stuff and then have it pulled back at the last second. So, you know, I hope you all join me in keeping an eye on these projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Just as a reminder for our people who are participating online, this is a very good time, if your device has fallen asleep, to wake it up because we will be voting shortly. Al Shahadi? Mr. Shahadi, is he online?
Yep. Hi, my name's Al Shahadi. I'm a longtime Byram resident. I'll keep my remarks short. I'm here to speak in support of the motion to cut. I also think that the RTM should, as Lucy said, really reconsider the way that the committee is set up. The Rink Users Committee has been trying to expropriate the entire park. They have been at this for way too long. They don't have consensus on anything. And in addition to cutting the funds, I think the whole issue of who is leading this decision-making process should be revisited. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline Schaefer? I don't know if she's online. If you're on... Raise your hand if you're there. Rosna Castro? I believe she's online. Ms. Castro? Okay. James Waters? And Glenn Kaner, did I call you and you passed? Okay, good. Okay, that concludes our speaker sign-up sheet. So we are going to move to a vote. Again, if you're online, you know, please wake up your device because it hasn't been used in about 45 minutes. So this is going to be BOC motion to delete $950,000 from DPW Construction and Maintenance. And I think the line item is 956-243-21. Oh, yeah, well, I'll get to that, Mr. Calb. So when you are... Okay. So the BOC motion to delete, okay? If you are in favor of deleting this item from the budget, you would vote yes. If you are opposed to it, you would vote no. The vote hasn't opened yet. I see people clicking. It hasn't gone anywhere yet. Okay. So Craig, could you please prepare the voting window? Get the little... Let me know when you're ready. You ready? Okay. Okay, the voting window is open. You may now use your clicker and click. You have about 39 seconds left to cast your vote. I'm sorry. We're just waiting for one individual who is having a little bit of difficulty. We're just waiting for one individual who is having a little bit of difficulty. Jackie, has he found? Where is he? I'm sorry, what? Who's in the back? Oh. Okay, has everybody voted? I think we've taken care of all of the issues, okay? Jackie, do you have the vote for Mr. Quigley? Okay. Okay, wait a minute. And I'm getting a report from, I'm getting a report from somebody online that they're trying to vote. Hang on. There's a member from District 8, I believe, who's having some difficulty logging on, so we're trying to see if we can help him. Yes, Mr. Broadhurst? Yes, Mr. Broadhurst has a point of information. That is an excellent question. We're, we are, there's a member from District 8 who's having some difficulty logging on, so our technical team is trying to assist that member to log on. Okay. Why don't you come to the podium, Mr. Broadhurst? I can't, okay. I think that we are getting confirmation, wait a minute. We're getting confirmation that the member who had some difficulty is willing to allow us to proceed while he joins hopefully at the next, at the next time. Has everyone in the room voted who would like to vote? Okay. Craig, could you please close the vote? Okay, I have the vote. Thank you for your patience on the BOC motion to delete. It's 189 in favor, 13 opposed with nine abstentions. We did use two paper ballots. There were two people who had difficulty with their clicker, so we pivoted to a paper ballot for them. And their vote is included on these paper ballots, so it won't be on the total that you're about to see. But Craig, can you please show the vote? That motion has carried. So the $950,000 has been deleted. We are going to keep going along with our, our budget. We are on page 11. We finished, our next item is 380 fleet, 440 external entities, 680 Board of Education, 710 Parrot Library, 822 Parks and Recreation, Parks, Playground and Fields, 829 Parks and Recreation Trees, 833 Parks and Recreation Beaches, 834 Parks and Recreation Harbors and Boating Facilities, 999 Fixed Charges. Now we're into the Sewer Maintenance Fund. 361 DPW Sewer Maintenance, 361 Sewer Improvement, 450 Nathaniel Witherell, 670 School Lunches, 900 Capital. Hang on for a second. Parking, whatever they say. Did I, 900, which I think I lost myself on my own page. Here we go. 219 Parking Services, 318 DPW Highway Traffic Engineering, 219 Parking Services, 317 DPW Highway Parking, 824 Griffithy Harris Golf Course, 900 Capital, 131 Retirement, 132 OPEB, 187 Shellfish Commission, 384, I'm sorry, 834 Harbor Management Commission, 600 BOE American Rescue Plan. Now we go into the Budget Resolutions. And I believe that legislative rules has a couple of amendments to those resolutions. Mr. Bergweger, would you like to offer those now?
The first resolution, first Scrivener problem was on page 10 of the 154 resolutions. This is Resolution Number 38. And it has, it starts reading 38, period, period. We delight, delete the second period. And then the end of it says to be determined, and we delete that. The other one is paragraph 54, 54C. That's on page 34. It's New Underscored Language. And it reads, "The town's Department of Health is authorized to apply for and accept supplemental funding awards from the state and Connecticut Department of Public Health, DPH, for reimbursement of costs incurred in response to," it says "the COVID-19 pandemic." That's not the way it should. It's a response to delete "the," put a dash or hyphen between COVID and 19, and delete the word pandemic. Those are the changes.
Thank you. Are there any objections to the Eleanor proposing those changes to those, to resolutions for Scrivener's errors? Those, those changes may be adopted upon unanimous consent. I just want to make sure everybody's okay with that. Hearing none, those changes are adopted upon unanimous consent. Okay. Now, Craig, are you ready? Because we're going to take a vote. Hang on, let me just make sure. Are you ready? Okay. We are going to take a vote on, no, no, not the Scrivener's errors. We are, we are now ready to take a vote on Item 3 as amended. Okay. So this is going to be Item 3 as amended, which is the budget for, Craig, can you add to the title page so it's a little bit more descriptive, where it says FY Budget 2224, maybe? Item 3 as amended fiscal year budget 2324. I think that's, that's sufficient. Again, this is just on the operational budget and the resolutions. We'll be taking two bonding resolutions shortly. Okay. We're going to see what it looks like now. Okay, good. Item 3 as amended fiscal year 2324. This reflects the 950, actually, this doesn't. Well, it will, the 950 coming out. So, is the two-minute clock up there? Yep, so can you prepare that? Oh, our names are gone. Hang on, hang on, hang on. Okay. Hang on, Craig might be able to change that for you. There you go. Okay. So Craig, can you open, can you set the timer? Okay. It looks like the voting window is open. You may now cast your vote. If you are in favor of the budget, you would vote yes. If you are opposed to the budget as amended, you would vote no. Okay. Has everybody voted in the room and had a chance to look at the screen to make sure their vote has counted or has been registered, recorded? I think we are still waiting. The, the individual who had some difficulty at the, the earlier vote is still having some difficulty from eight. So let's see if we have gotten permission to move on or if he's asking us to hold the vote open for him. Jenny? Jenny, can you just confirm he's asking us to move ahead without him? Okay. All right. So has everybody voted that wants The person in eight has asked us -- has allowed us to move on without his vote. Craig, are you all set? Okay. Has everyone voted who wants to vote? I see some things clicking on and off, and I just want to make sure you're okay with what you've done. Okay. We are going to close the vote. Craig, could you please close the vote? Thank you. Okay. I have the vote on item number -- item number three, the budget for fiscal year 2324 as amended. It's 197 in favor, seven opposed with two abstentions. That budget item has carried. Craig, could you please show the vote? Okay, there we go. Now we are going to take up our two bonding resolutions. Okay? Craig, I'm going to give you the revised amount for your sheet. The first of the bonding resolutions is found on page -- hang on. Let me see what page it's on. Okay, so I'm going to give you the revised bonding resolution, okay, Craig? And you'll have to add that number in on the sheet. So it'll say capital bonding resolution. And the correct amount, and I'm going to confirm it with Mr. Geiger, is $94,702,333. Is that correct? Okay. And this is the original amount, less than $950,000, that we have deleted for the Hammel-Rink study. I'm sorry? It's 94,702,333. I'm sorry? Roland? Mr. Geiger may be amending his figure. Let's see. Okay. Is that a six? Is that a six? Okay. I believe Mr. Geiger has amended his original calculation, so Craig, this is going to cause you to amend it as well. So 94612333. Okay. Mr. Geiger, we're okay with that? Okay. Okay. Bonding resolution, this is for the capital budget, $94,612,333, and needs a majority of our membership, so 116 members must vote in favor to pass. Okay? Craig, could you please open the voting window? You may cast your vote now. If you are in favor of this bonding resolution, you would vote yes. If you are opposed, you would vote no. You have about 30 seconds left. If you want to check the screen, see if your name is filled in with a blue square. If you have any questions, you can come to the front. Okay. Has everyone cast their vote? Are there any concerns or questions? Jenny? Are you okay? Is anyone on the phone?
He wasn't -- he's not able to join any of the votes.
Okay, okay, okay. All right. We're going to close the voting window. Okay? Craig, could you please close the vote window? Okay, the vote on the capital bonding resolution, 193 in favor, two opposed with three abstention. That bonding resolution is carried. Craig, could you please show the vote? There you go. And we come to our final vote of the evening, which is the second of the two bonding resolutions. This one is $350,000 for the sewer bonding. Craig, could you please put that one up? It'll probably say bonding resolution, $350,000. Okay. So again, this needs 116 to pass. If you are in favor of supporting the resolution to bond for $350,000, you would vote yes. If you are opposed, you would vote no. Craig, could you please prepare the vote and start the clock? Okay. Do not turn your clickers in while the vote is open, because if you inadvertently click your clicker, it could change the vote while you're jostling around. Okay? So please just wait one minute and two seconds, because I don't want anyone to inadvertently, while they're turning it in and the vote is open, have their vote changed. You have about 20 seconds. If anyone hasn't cast their vote, this is a good time to do it. We're going to close the vote. Craig, could you please close the vote? Okay. You may now turn in your clickers, because the vote is closed. Okay, I have the vote on the sewer bonding resolution. Those in favor, 189, opposed three, abstaining two. That item has carried. There being no further business, our budget meeting is complete and meeting stands adjourned. Thank you very much.